The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Repala.
Present.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenak.
Here.
Alderman Savannick.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
All are present.
The first item on the agenda is the report of department head, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes in communications to approve, no, to receive. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through H and Communications I through N.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Do you have discussions here?
I was, but I'll let it go.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Sandra DeBeille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I'm going to begin with the Board of Public Works. There's no opportunity for public comment on this agenda, so I'm going to speak now. There are two street use applications. No, I haven't checked emails lately. I'll have to do that. Okay. No one emails me anymore. I'm not very popular. Anyhow, both of these are great events. I just have an issue with the routes and the use. The first one, the street use application for Twisted Pistons, is closing Main Street and part of Milwaukee from, I think, 10:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. It is a Thursday, it's a workday, with the Racine Street Bridge being closed and traffic being due to or to Takeo during Memorial Day morning. The traffic jam was horrendous. From, traffic was backed up from Takeo to Third with semis and with other people going to work that weren't trying to get to the parade. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity at this time, for this one year, to maybe move it to one of the parks, if that's available, or maybe even over to the Gilbert site and kind of showcase the riverfront there. And we have all this open land. A lot of people haven't been over there. A lot of people haven't been on that site. It might be a great opportunity to try something different and get the traffic away from the downtown because there are businesses open, Faith Technologies is still operating, and they're going to be, it's going to be a real mess with this being on a workday. The second one, the Race the Lake, that's a Sunday morning, and when they come through Manassia, it's early, it's like 7:00 a.m. But the problem I have, and we had this back in April, there was a running race, a 55-mile running race, and they led them through Main Street, down up Milwaukee, and Broad and crossing Broad and Racine. They were running over the construction area where it says road closed. This is a bike race, which is more hazardous because of the loose gravel. That road, that intersection is closed. This one takes them from Washington up to Takeo to turn right onto Main Street and then go all the way down to Racine Street and then take a left up to Third. That's totally torn up. There's no way a bike race should be going down Main Street and up Racine. I would suggest that they just stay on Takeo all the way to Third and bypass all of that construction. I don't know who reviewed this, but I would strongly suggest, for safety reasons alone and for the fact that the whole thing's tore up, that that be reevaluated. I also, just kind of out of curiosity, and no one probably has the answer, but I was looking back and way back, like 10 years ago, former Director of Public Works Mark Radke was looking into the permitting process. When we have these events that aren't in the city but are coming through the city, marathons, races, because we have, according to their schedule, there's eight officers that would need to be patrolling these intersections, and he was looking at a way to try to recoup some of that cost for these events. And we have more and more, we have the marathon, if there's something, because they don't pay a user fee or a rental fee because it's not held in the city. And if they charge a fee to enter, they're generating revenue that perhaps there's something that we could get back from that. Then, that's it for Department of Public Works. I just wanted to make a comment. At the last meeting, I asked for an update on code enforcement. There was nothing in the packet, but ironically, Nina, they do a quarterly newsletter. I really miss it. We used to have one, and it was replaced with a calendar that's given out once a year. People, you know, 42% of our population are not permanent residents, so if they're not here in December, they don't get the news. And Nina, Manassia set the stage for code enforcement. You know, we were the first in the Fox Valley to actually focus on code enforcement. We hired an individual, Joe Paul Zien, did a great job. Over the years, it's transferred over to community development, and Nina had a vacancy, and theirs was in community development, and they moved it back to the police department. And since this person has started, they started in December. In the first three months, they inspected 556 properties, which resulted in opening 230 cases, and of those 230 cases, only 28 citations ultimately needed to be issued. So it isn't the idea that it's a money generator and we have to find people, it's cleaning up the neighborhoods. As they said, this is Nina's goal. The goal of this program is to resolve problems within the city before they become bigger issues. For example, if we allow one house to become rundown, it has the potential to create a domino effect. One house becomes rundown, which leads to the risk of an entire street of houses becoming rundown, which leads to the risk of an entire neighborhood becoming rundown. And I can testify to that, which breeds crime and unwelcome behavior. By being proactive and keeping our city clean, we are showing the criminal element that is not welcome in our city. And may I add, the loss of value. I mean, it's not even, it's not that these people are criminals, it depreciates the value of all the other properties that do try to keep up their homes. My neighborhood is a mess, and community development has shown a blind eye to it. And actually, our former planner described it as it wasn't a, not a high priority with them. So I really think we need to do some serious work on code enforcement. And sorry to disappoint you, Mr. Grotty, but I did attend tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Did you have something else?
As long as I'm here.
If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
Dan Evans, 859 Lotus Trail. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging that I have some words periodically, but I would like to second what this young lady said as far as code enforcement. I know I had a conversation with our area alderman when he came around, and I mentioned a few things to him. When I had to call about our neighbor that hadn't mowed, same neighbor that, he just moved in a year ago, young individual, doesn't know what he's doing. I mentioned, as soon as I first met him, I'd be happy to answer questions. I don't mean this jokingly or nasty or anything, but we're really starting to wonder, maybe he's allergic to the sun, which actually is something. It could, it could be. I mean, honest to God, it could be. Some people are. When he is out cutting the lawn, he's covered. But anyways, I mentioned about the trees. There's a code for having low branches over sidewalks, and I've mentioned it to yourself and also when I called in, and nothing has been done. When we walk along, the trees were probably just completely overlooked when they were planted, where the sidewalk would be when our area finally got sidewalks. And some of these trees are only five feet, six feet away from the sidewalk. And so now the branches are growing out, and they need trimming. But yes, I second the idea of we need some code enforcement. That's what they're all written for. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll move, if we don't have objection, we do have Jonathan here from Ellers, and I'd like to move to ordinances and resolutions, item number three. Is there any objections to doing the borrowing first? Seeing none. Jennifer, Jonathan, did you want to kind of go through the entire package and then we can go through the resolutions?
Sure. Sorry, there's about eight resolutions there for you, but when you issue geo bonds, they have to have you break it out by corporate purpose. So the item in front of you is approval or authorization to move forward with the sale of $3,290,000 in geo corporate purpose bonds. This would be to provide financing for the city's annual capital improvements projects for two years. So this would be the 2021 projects and the 2022 projects. The various purposes listed are fire equipment, fire buildings, library improvements, park improvements, police capital improvements, and street improvements. I understand that the detailed list you've all, you know, seen, hopefully, and if there's questions, I know Jen can address that in terms of specific projects. The authorization to move forward, we would go ahead and, if you want to, I know that you guys have this report in your packet, but if you want to skip to page five of the pre-sale report, we can talk through the schedule for the sale. So with authorization tonight, we would plan to actually hold the sale on July 18th. So we would take bids from underwriters on that day, and then I would come back that night and have you all authorize the awarding of the sale, and then we would close just a couple weeks later on August 3rd. Next page is Table 1, which is the city's current debt profile. Walk through some of these tables here so you can get an idea of how this borrowing would impact the city's finances. So right now, the debt service levy is, as of the 2022 budget, is $1,100,000, and that equates to about 93 cents per thousand as a tax rate. That's on the column, that's sort of two-thirds of the way to the right under net tax levy. What that does is takes all the principal and interest due each year. I know most of you have seen these charts a million times, but for the new faces here, you take the column all the way to the left, which is your total principal and interest due each year, and then we have a few additions to that, and then anything in red is subtracting out of that total gross amount. Those are other revenues that are paying debt service each year, and then you arrive at a net tax levy. So again, you can see from Table 1, it's 1.1 million this year, and it projects to drop off 966,000 next year, 922. That's based on the existing debt that the city has. If you look at Table 2, I have a breakdown of the various purposes for the borrowing, split up by the 2021 projects and 2022 projects. And so you can see at the bottom, all the borrowing, there's two cash projects as well, but all of the borrowing figures add up to that, CIP figures add up to that 3,230,459. Next page, Table 3, that's how we arrive at the total borrowing size. If you look on the left there, you see the projects we're borrowing for, those dollars on the top, and then cost of issuance, estimated cost of issuance in the middle there, and on the bottom, you see that $3,290,000. That's how we arrive at the total borrowing amount. And to the right, we have that split out under each of the six purposes. So you can see the allocation of projects as well as cost of issuance to each of the six purposes, which is why you're authorizing individual purposes as a not-to-exceed-dollar amount. Table 4 is, you will need to get the magnifying glass out for this one, or I need to print bigger paper. But this is each of the six purposes' allocation of debt service, so principal and interest each year, using estimated interest rates, and we'll talk about interest rates in a little And having, so, you know, some of these are very small purposes, some of them, especially the street improvements, is a very large purpose. But nevertheless, that's how we structure it out. All the way to the right, you can see the, all of those numbers added up. And then on the next page, Table 5, this is the tax impact analysis. So the left in the blue, that's again the existing, the city's existing debt profile. You can see that first column, that 1.1 million, that's the net tax levy for debt service. And then in orange, we have the column that says 2022 geo bonds, that's this issue that you, is in front of you today. And then we've also added, just for illustration purposes, borrowings in, not next year, because we're doing next year's borrowing this year, but in '24, '25, and '26, just to see how that would look. And you can see there's a total net debt service levy under the orange column there. You see that it increases $68,000 in '23, $71,000 in '24, and then after we get past those years where we're borrowing money, it drops off. And that's kind of the structure that we would look for when we're doing this, where, you know, when you plan to issue money, you expect, since debt service is coming on the following year, that there would be an increase. And then once you stop planning for an issuance, then the debt levy would drop off to make room for future debt issuance, or, you know, however things go. So that's kind of where we are in terms of the tax impact analysis. And then Table 6 is just looking at the state statutory debt service, or I'm sorry, geo debt capacity. So as of 2022, the city is using 47% of its limit, it's a legal limit for geo debt. And this analysis shows that if, you know, with the 3.2 million this year, that would raise us up to 52% of usage, and then even if we did all those borrowings that we have built in the future years, it wouldn't go any higher than that 52%. So in a good place with regard to using the legal debt limit. Finally, interest rates. This last page is two-year trend municipal bond rates. I should have given you the five-year, so you could see that it was, really went down, and then it's gone up, just, you know, it's halfway up to where it was basically four or five years ago. So, but you can see in the last, really just three weeks or so, rates have really started to drop off from where they were surging to begin this year. They basically were going up from the second week of January all the way until the beginning of May, and then just in the last, they've really dropped in the last couple weeks. So my hope is that's, you know, the market correction, or correction kind of stabilizing maybe, or, you know, adjusting for overcorrection, and that they're going to kind of stay down in this territory. But either way, if I showed you the five-year or the 10-year, you can see that with an average interest rate between 3% and 320%, that's still historically low. So happy to answer any questions on this plan or anything related.
Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, and Jennifer, too. Tonight, because we won't be taking delivery of our fire truck, there is, there will not be 675,000 placed in the budget. And tonight, we're voting on the possibility of allocating dollars for the new command truck and for the used pickup truck. Has that been placed in this setup? I read it, but I wasn't sure it was those items.
It was. So I did adjust the 2022 projects to, for the fire truck, for one, to just pick up that down payment, and then moving in those additional vehicles. So I adjusted the 2022 number based on what you would be approving.
And then roughly, what would we be budgeting then next year when we take possession of the fire truck? It wouldn't be the full 675, would it?
No, because we would already have the down payment of the, about 265,000 that I have figured into the 2022 borrowing.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay. And then my last question is, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name again.
Jonathan.
Jonathan.
Yeah.
When we actually finalize this and actually go out for, could the interest rate change? Because I know that the feds are looking at a possibility of another quarter, half, three-quarters percent increase. So, I mean, how soon are we going out to lock in? Because I'll tell you what, we did an outstanding job when we did the borrowing for our public works facility, probably at the lowest rate you'll ever see. And I wish the public would know that, that we saved hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing that, and interest rates now are starting to go back up.
Yeah, and there is a Fed meeting, two, no, one Fed meeting between now and the sale date, which is July 18th. So that is, that is the date when the interest rate would be locked, is July 18.
July 18.
And that's, and it's really, there is a 30-day kind of period when you do bonds, where there's a petition requirement, so we really couldn't do it any sooner than that after this date.
So we're not going to, this won't happen until July 18?
Yes, that's correct.
Because, in my opinion, we're probably looking at another quarter to half percent for sure.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree. The question is whether, on that chart, the last page, the question is, has the market already priced in that increase in what we saw, you know, with these 60 and 70 basis point increases in the first quarter of the year? So the hope is, maybe they have already, and that the jump won't be as big when the Fed makes their decision. But yes, it certainly is possible that rates end up higher than what we've certainly seen in all last year's borrowing. And then when I put together the amortization schedule for the planning, I used interest rates that were based on a sale we had done recently and included a pretty significant buffer amount in there just to cover for market movement. So the structure that I showed you, the tax impact structure that I showed, that is assuming rates that are higher than they are right now.
Okay.
And, you know, hopefully, higher than they will be.
So when this comes back to us in July or August, we'll have the exact amounts and, okay. And I know I said it was my last question, I apologize, but as I'm going along, I'm thinking that. I know you can. But is there anything else that we haven't thought of in our capital improvement or foresee that could, might, or could still be placed in this? And I guess that's more for Jennifer, because we didn't know about the fire situation until like two weeks ago when we approved it.
You know, as we are putting together this financing plan, you know, one of our goals is to keep that debt service levy as flat as possible or with as little increase. So that definitely was a goal that we had together as we were putting it together, to structure it in that way. You know, we could always make the borrowing larger, but to keep basically in line with what we presented last year as far as our financial plan as well, to kind of bring forth that same concept.
Okay.
So other projects would be 2023 projects, then if we would go further out? And then we have the risk, are interest rates going to go higher or lower at that point, plus we're paying a year plus of interest on those funds?
It could be higher. That's why I raised the question, because I know as we're doing things in the parks or at the city garage or anywhere in the community, we might find ourselves needing to borrow for something. And I guess it's kind of a tight schedule the way it is. We'll see where it is July 18th.
Grab your fingers.
Other questions? It's a quiet bunch. So for the two new people, we normally borrow, we typically do the projects, and then once everything comes in, in the spring or even sometime more towards the end of summer, fall of the following year, we'll borrow for those funds. We'll use our cash flow to take care of the costs of those funds. And this year, we're not going to do that. We're going to borrow for last year's projects and this year's projects because of exactly what Stan is saying, that we feel that by the time that this would normally have happened, interest rates will be significantly higher. So that's why we're doing basically nine months early, a year early.
I have a question for you, Mayor.
Sure.
So if we were to take these today, do you want us to take each one individually, or should we take it like 3 through 10?
I believe we have to take them.
Unfortunately, have to take them all.
That's what I figured. All right. So I'll make a motion then that we adopt our 18, Resolution 1822, authorizing $380,000 in general obligation bonds for the construction of police facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second. I'm not sure who the second is. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have to take roll calls on all these unfortunately, too.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item four? Alderman Savannick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for our Resolution 22, a resolution authorizing $260,000 in general obligation bonds for equal general obligation bonds for equipment of the fire department.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a...
200, yeah.
I'll just repeat it. There's a motion, a second by Alderman Nichols for Resolution R1922 in the amount of 260,000. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Is there a motion for item five? Alderman Sovek.
There's a second here. Yep, I'll take that one too. Our, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2022. This is a resolution authorizing for 105,000 of general obligation bonds for the fire station projects.
105,000, Stan?
Yes, is there a second?
Yes.
Second.
There's a motion, a second?
That's what it says, Randy.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Nichols, correct? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item six? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution 2122, initial resolution authorizing $65,000 general obligation bonds for library projects.
Is there a second? So, a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
There's a motion for item seven. Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for R2122, a resolution authorizing, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion for R2222, an initial resolution authorizing $350,000 for the general obligation bonds for parks and public grounds projects.
So, a motion, a second by Alderman Grady? Is there any discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. What exactly are those projects? Could you go into detail what they're going to be?
Those are 21 and 22 CIP projects, but Jennifer probably has the full list.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
She's looking.
Oh, so am I.
So, for 2021, it was a combination of a roof replacement, basketball courts and shore wall work. And then 2022, it's what's in our CIP, so playground equipment, restroom upgrades, I believe a park walkway and trail.
How much was there for playground equipment?
I'd have to pull up the budget.
So, there's two playgrounds in there, correct? About 100,000 for each Smith, not Smith, um, Shepherd. So, it's just the city portion of Jefferson. Was I pretty close to those numbers?
I didn't even go there because I...
Is that close enough, Randy? It's about 100,000 each.
Okay, yes. Lots of pizza sales.
Anything else? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Is there a motion for item eight? Alderman Sovek. Sorry, hold on. Alderman, I hit the button and it went your way rather than his.
Oh, go ahead, Stan. All right. Anyways, move for approval of R2322. This resolution is to authorize $2,130,000 in general obligation bonds for street improvements.
Is there, there's a second from Alderman Schmidt? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item nine. Alderman Schmidt?
Yes, I'd like to make a resolution, a motion for Resolution R-2422, a resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, a motion, a second by Alderman Grady? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
And the last one, do we have a motion for item 10? Alderman Sovek.
I'd like to make a motion for Resolution R2522. This resolution is providing for the sale of $3,290,000 in general obligation corporate purpose bonds.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Grady? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, Jonathan. Safe travels back. We'll move back up to the top. We have the consent agenda, item G this evening. Do we have any items that you would like separated? Alderman Sovek?
Two and three.
Do we have a motion, do we have any others? I see none. We have a motion for the remaining items? Alderman Sovek?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I moved that we approve the consent agenda items, common council minutes, and accepting the Post Crescent media as the city's official newspaper for 2022 through
Okay, you, you said one thing and we did something different. So, you want to separate, you want to separate three and four, that's fine. So, we have a... One is the common council minutes, two is the Post Crescent, three is Public Works, four is...
My agenda doesn't say that.
Yes, they were misnumbered, the first and...
One, two, and one, and I'm going according to the agenda, so...
Okay.
So, public knows I do know what I'm doing.
The public, the one that's up on the website shows it the other way. So, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda items, the common council minutes of May 16th and the Post Crescent as the city official newspaper. Any, no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
So, the next item is the Don Hippis and Sons. Okay, is, is there a motion?
So, that would be number three? And then on, on...
Our agenda, it says number two, so... Anyways, at this time, Mayor, I move that we approve a change order to Don Hippis and Sons for the Manasha Utilities work of 2022, the water main and sanitary sewer reconstruction. That's contract unit M0003-09-21-0050. I should be saying zero. I don't know those M00s are O's or zeros, right?
We'll get the idea eventually.
Okay, an add of 126,781.81, change order number one.
Is there a second? So, a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt? Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
It was the wrong screen.
You guys all voted for the wrong thing.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is the recommendation from Nina Manasha Fire Rescue Joint Finance. Alderman, I don't know who's flashing. Okay, Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for the City of Manasha Common Council, reallocation of 185,000 of the budgeted 675,000 for the new engine, number 31, and to spend 85,000 for a new command truck and 75,000 for a new command Tahoe and 25,000 for a used pickup truck in 2022.
Is there a second? So, a motion, a second by Alderman Schmidt? Other discussion? Alderman Sovek?
Yeah, I just want to explain that because we are not receiving the fire truck, which was originally scheduled, it's, they're going to be out now, I think, what, 14 months instead of the regular, what was it, 12 or something? So, anyways, we looked at our capital improvement budgets and saw that these pieces of equipment really needed, needed help, so we decided to do those. This was also approved by the City of Nina.
This is slightly less than what was originally budgeted then. Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Are these gas powered or electric powered? Oh, they are? Well, one is, yeah, I figured the used one would be...
Way in the back?
Yeah, are these...
If you could pass...
He said they're gas.
They're gas? Okay, gas might be $10 a gallon. Okay, thank you.
I don't think you'll get an electric vehicle quite yet. We looked a little bit, it's pretty difficult to find an electric vehicle at this point. Okay, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item I is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of May 13th through June 2nd, 2022 in the amount of $1,542,367.58.
It's a motion, a second? Any discussion? Do you have discussion, Becky?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remove check number 74848 in the amount of $50 to Jeff Nichols for board of review work.
Any, you don't need a second. Any other discussion? No? So, what we're voting on right now is the accounts payable and payroll excluding that check that she just listed, 74848. And then we'll take up that check separately.
Randy?
Let's not flash and we can't vote.
Doesn't want you to vote?
Should I restart it?
Let's try again. I don't know who made the second.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, now we have check 74848 that Alderman Nichols wishes to abstain from, so if we could vote on that one as well? We don't need another motion, no, it's just separated. This is to, yeah, to pay that check.
Motion carries seven zero.
So, it's a good example for you, Rosita, because now we're going to do the next one the same way. Item two is the liquor license renewal applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we take these all in one full swoop? Thank you. Move to approve the liquor license renewal applications for the 2022 through 2023 licensing year as listed in the clerk's memo dated June 6, 2022.
There's a motion, a second? Alderman Isnek, did you?
Can I abstain from voting on this?
So, what you'd like to do is you'd like to separate the license for, I'm not sure what your business is listed under.
Under Crybals LLC. But should I back away from all of them?
You can do either way.
I'd like to back away from all of them if I could.
So, you'd like to abstain from all of them?
Yes, please.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries seven zero.
Then you should list her as abstaining as well. Item three is the development agreement between PGC Group and the City of Manasha? Not sure who's first. Alderman Sovek?
I would like for Sam to...
Sure, we can...
...update us a little bit on this and whatever any changes might have, have occurred here. I read through this and I was confused because it's not what I recall or remember, so if you could just update us on that, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. So, back in 2013, we had a third amendment to the development agreement with PGC Group regarding the Gilbert paper mill. At that time, there was an unpaid balance of 175,000 from the city to, to the PGC Group or the owners of the property. We did reduce that interest to zero until that project was completed. Should the project have been completed before January 1 of 2014, that interest was then supposed to basically automatically go back into place. It is through discussions and looking back, the interest never got placed back on to the accrued unpaid balance. However, in talking with the owner, they do believe that the interest should have been started 1-1 of 2015. So, basically, what this is looking at are, first of all, the current remaining balance of that 175,000 is just under $4,600. So, at calendar, after calendar year next year, again, we would pay the $4,600 and that would be the remaining of the balance. However, there is yet to be any interest paid going back to 2014, 2015. So, at this time, basically, the owners is requesting to resume the, the 4% interest, basically stating that the land reclamation project was done 1-1 of 2015, so that interest should go back to that date. I would pass it to Jennifer Sassman, Director Sassman, regarding the actual amount of that interest. And then based upon an annual, an annual incentive, basically was, I think calculated at 95% if I'm not mistaken. So, that would be, you know, the option to, to pay it all upfront, which would be over 100% of the, the property taxes next year or pay, pay it in multiple years.
Did you want to add anything, Jennifer?
Sure. Are you looking for an interest amount?
Is that what you're looking for, Stan?
Something else, but go ahead.
Okay, so as Sam had mentioned, the balance that would be owing next year to pay this up would be 45,9702. I did go back and calculate the interest, starting back at 1-1 of 15. And if we would choose to basically pay that off this year, I have a total interest amount of 20,25239 to pay that final installment as well as the interest going back to 15.
And as far as the work that had been done there... And as far as the work that had been done there, I guess this question will be for Sam or the mayor, who decided that the work was completed?
Greg Kyle had determined that the work was completed before he left.
It's my opinion it wasn't. And where the Lawson Canal section is, was never taken out, and it was my feeling that that part should have been part of this. And eventually, if anything is to be done out there, now the city's going to have to pick up that cost. So, any disagreeing opinions, or?
So the only thing I would take a look at is the actual language of the Amendment three, paragraph six. It notes the rate of interest applied to the unpaid balance for the land reclamation project, one hundred and seventy-five, shall be zero percent until such a time the project, including the shoreline site prep, is completed. Those two are defined within the, the development agreement. So the land reclamation project means the demolition of the former Gilbert Paper Mill buildings to be taken down to grade as specified in Exhibit C. So again, taken down to grade, that was, that was likely completed. And then the shoreline park, that portion of the project, which the developer shall donate to the city after completion of the land reclamation project, and which the city has agreed to, at minimum, dedicate the land as a park and turn it into the finished park area. So again, from a, a true definition standpoint, the, the demolition of the building, taken down to grade, was likely completed. In addition, the, the property was purchased or donated, however that worked, prior to one, one of 2014.
What does taken down by grade, in definition, mean?
Well, there's not a definition that, regarding taken down in grade. Again, one of the things we usually would do from a demolition standpoint is we would list that out, whether or not foundations have to come out or not, seeded, topsoil, graded, but that's not in this definition, but that is usually the definition we would look to use for a demolition.
It's just my opinion.
Sure. Not sure who's next. Alderman Nichols is next.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Schrader, this agreement, the original agreement, is from July of 2007, correct? Okay. So I think, I, I don't disagree with what Alderman Sevanik has to say. And I think there are, we could find eight different opinions up here about this property and how things have evolved over the last, I can't do math that fast, but it's been too long. And along the way, I think the city has learned a lot about development agreements and how we would prefer to have them structured, from our experience with this agreement. Having said that, we are about to make the final payment on this agreement, fulfill the city's final obligation on this, and while some definitions could have probably been clearer in the agreement, for the most part, the building is down. And I think it's in the best, the city's best interest to simply move forward, move on with this, and so I move that the city pay the interest due beginning January first, 2015, and do that as soon as possible.
So your motion is to, to restore the interest beginning, at four percent, beginning at January first, 2015, and then pay the interest and the balance upon approval of the council, something to that effect?
Yes, I was going to ask about the balance, the four, forty-five hundred, if that could be included with the final payment. Great, so.
What'd you get for a motion?
I'll, I'll just read what's on the bottom. To approve PGC's group's request to resume interest at four percent on the balance incentive for the land reclamation project, effective January first, 2015, and to pay the last payment due, along with that, as soon as possible.
Okay, is there a second? So motion a second. Is there further discussion? Are you finished, Becky? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. So, in other words, the city dropped the ball by not being specific enough to take out the bridge fifteen years ago. Not the, that, take out that little bridge? No.
The dam.
The law, okay, the dam, okay.
Not even that.
Okay. Well, it's cement stuff. So, we weren't specific enough to take that stuff out. So why can't we just tell them, hey, you finished, finished the job, and then we'll give you the twenty thousand? That's pretty simple.
May I, Mayor?
You may I.
If we were writing this development agreement today, we likely still would not talk about removing that dam at this exact stage. So I mean, I don't think it was the intent to remove the dam back in 2007 or 2013, whenever this was done. I, I think, more or less, it took a long time for the site to get to its current state, and I, I would not disagree, and I'm not saying, you know, this or that. I mean, we all, we all review these things, we all approve them, and again, it's, it is what it is, and I would agree, just kind of moving on with Alderman Nichols.
So Director Schrader wasn't here. Was I the only one that was here at that point? I don't know if Stan was here or not. So, at this point, in 2007, 2009, this was our first developer finance TIF. We could not borrow on the open market, we could not borrow from a bank, we could not borrow, period. And they needed to start work on this building. So we worked with them, developer finance TIFs were very uncommon at that point. We had to look at an eight percent interest rate in order to have this, I think is what it said in here, it was a very high interest rate, in order to have this. And if you look in there, they did a warehouse project that was going to increase the value by four hundred thousand. An office project that was going to improve, add three hundred thousand, and there was also the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission Office. And the reason that, about, what was this, fourteen, 2014, we could borrow the money at like three percent, so we paid off all of those developer finance portions and saved the city a lot of money by doing it. The reason we did not pay off the one hundred and seventy-five thousand is because it wasn't complete at that point, and that's why we left that portion there. And I guess we can look at the definition of complete at this point, but that's kind of a little bit of the history. This was the first developer finance TIF, and we needed to do something with that Gilbert site. And I think, as Sam said, we probably write this a little differently today, but I think that they have lived up to the intent of the project, and it would be good to clear out this project from our books and hopefully start moving forward with developing a project on that site. And that's up to you if you want to vote for or against it at this point.
Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is to Sam, if we deny this, what are the financial impact? Or what's, what's going to happen if this is denied?
I would defer to our legal counsel on that.
Attorney Captain?
Go ahead.
The reason that it is actually here is because when I read the amendment, what I read in the amendment was zero percent interest, and that project needed to be completed by January one of 2014, and we know that it was not. And so I, if it would have been completed by that date, we wouldn't even be here. And so I had indicated to him, you, you know, we can put a memo together and ask the council if they would restart the interest, based on the date that it was completed, which he indicated was in fall of 2014. But just for ease and sake of no arguments, or whatever, was his opinion, we'll just go to January one, 2015. If it is denied, then there will be no interest paid, just the four thousand, five hundred some odd dollars that is still owed, and then the ball would be in PGC Group's court as to whether or not, you know, they wanted to do anything about that.
So that, would that entail the other twenty thousand that Jennifer stated that?
Correct. That's the interest portion.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alderman Sevanik?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to clarify my comments. I'm not talking about the bridge or the dam. I'm talking about the large block concrete that's over the Lawson Canal that didn't come out. And I personally felt that that should have come out as part of this agreement that was not done. And I think the reason it wasn't done, we're going to find out what it's going to take to remove that. We're probably talking dynamite. I'm serious. So, so I just don't think the project was complete. But what we did get is, we did get a clean site, and we also received grant money to do the park, and we have a beautiful extension. Hopefully, we'll complete that extension next year. That's part of the CIP budget, so that we could have looped the downtown area. So, part of the problem I have here is, and I'm voting for this, just so you know, I'm not, I'm not voting against it. But what I have a problem with, I, I heard many of you say fourteen years, fifteen years, three hundred years. Yeah. I don't think the, the site's being properly marketed, and that's what's discouraging. You have waterfront property that has a Riverwalk Park area that hasn't had a single thing done to it, and I'm just not happy about that portion of it either, but that has nothing to do with this. So anyways, that's why I will approve this, so that we can move forward, and hopefully this, we'll get some type of project there. I know we're going to be putting a bridge over that way, because that's about, that's a future CIP project for us. So, but I'm looking around the Fox Cities Green Bay, and I'm seeing these multi-story housing projects all along the river and waterways, not just housing, but also elderly facilities, like in, in the flats in Appleton, and why not this site? This is probably way more beautiful than those sites. So, that's just, maybe if I just send that message out there, something will start happening, and it has in the past.
Some good thoughts. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, we're back to ordinances and resolutions. Number one is Resolution fifteen, and this is my mistake. Last, last council meeting, we put the adoption of the Winnebago County Hazard Mitigation Plan on the agenda, but we did not put a resolution we should have. So this is the same, I don't know, three hundred some page document that you approved last time, but now in resolution form, if we have a motion. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve Resolution fifteen, twenty-two, a resolution adopting the Winnebago County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Is there a second? So motion a second by Alderman Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
And item two is the C Mar. Do we have a motion? It's a Public Works thing, so if you want to grab it. Oh, Becky, you want it, or Becky? Okay. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve Resolution sixteen, twenty-two, a resolution acknowledging the review of the City of Minasha Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, otherwise known as C Mar, under Wisconsin Administrative Code NR two oh eight.
Is there a second? It's a motion and a second. Laura, did you want to tell us what a C Mar is?
So I would say this is similar to, but a lot less intensive than our Stormwater MS4 Annual Report. Every year, we report to the DNR on the condition of our wastewater conveyance systems. That would include our pumps. Do we have an emergency overflow response plan? Do we have an operation and maintenance plan? What percent of our sewers are we televising? Are we replacing? What are funding methods going towards for sanitary projects for the upcoming year? So this is just an annual typical report that we provide to the DNR that outlines our sewerage system, and just kind of gives them a notice of where we are at. We are required to get a grade of a C or higher. If you're a C or lower, you have to actually submit a response plan for how you're going to correct and become into compliance. But we actually have an A based upon the criteria and evaluation that we have completed. So we are doing just fine, and looking pretty good. Thank you.
The treatment plant has a separate report from us.
Correct. This is, yeah, this is for our systems that we maintain.
Any other questions? Alderman Sevanik?
Just let Cory know that he did a good job with his homework assignment by getting an A.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
Item four is appointments. There are two. You could take them individually or together if you wish. That's okay. However you want to do it.
Mayor, I'd like for us to approve Patricia Rudolph to the Board of Review for a period of seven, one, two thousand twenty-one to seven, one, twenty thousand, two thousand and twenty-six. And then the mayor's also your appointment of Jeffrey Nichols to the Board of Review for the period of seven, one, twenty-two to seven, one, twenty-seven.
Is there, there's a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. And item. Her, her appointment got missed somehow last year, so we're approving last year's appointment and this year's appointment. You're welcome. I didn't know if anyone would catch that, and I thought I wasn't going to bring it up the big discussion if we didn't need to go there. So item six is public comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment this evening? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Minasha with video recordings of city meetings. Minasha residents and interested. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www.cityofmanassia-wy.gov. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's Contact a city alderman, contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.